And I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for September 17, 2019 to order. And the first item on the agenda, here we go.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
West.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Boone and Huzard are absent.
Okay, next item is we've got a big thing happening here. This is a presentation by consultants from SEH and EUA on draft space needs findings for downtown community campus plan. We are looking 15, 20, 30 years out into the future and here you are. Yeah.
You have to start somewhere.
Yeah. You can get started.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're honored to be in front of you tonight. We have been working for the last, oh, six weeks on the first part of our draft space needs analysis for the community campus plan. So the first piece that we've been looking at is talking to folks and assessing the actual needs for square footage and types of space. And then we'll be moving into how that space works on all of the public lands that are part of the project. My name is Bob Cost. I'm an urban designer with SEH and I'm the project manager. And speaking with me and all of you tonight will be Andy Lyons from UAE and Paul Reisingler from UEA. So they'll be dealing with the more technical sides of this. So what we're going to cover tonight, we have done some community engagement as we laid out here. We had a Sunday stroll, if any of you were out in downtown and out at the parks a couple of weeks ago, we just informally talked to folks as they kind of moved around and asked them to give us input on what they wanted to see as part of the community campus plan. We held a series of stakeholder focus group meetings. We did an All Our Ideas online program, which Andy will go into. And this afternoon, around the lunch hour, we did a presentation here in the council chambers and, I don't know, had maybe 20 or so folks come in and listen to what we were commenting on or presenting and had some good input and dialogue from community members. We'll go through the space needs findings and recommendations and then we'll close out quickly with our upcoming October workshop, which we're hoping all of you can participate in. So the Sunday stroll took place over a couple of hours at two points on one Sunday and then again on another Sunday. And as you see in the photographs, we had some sandwich boards set up and we asked people, you know, what would they like to see incorporated into the community campus? And this was just an informal sort of pop-up opportunity to get people, you know, mind around the project and just get some input. So you can see on the screen the variety of things that we heard from people. There was a lot of interest in combining facilities and sharing and having public space, outdoor space, green space, making things very walkable, a focus on downtown and making sure the campus really works as part of an integrated piece of downtown. Some interesting things like making it pet-friendly, having a place for food trucks, places to sit. So those were sort of the top ideas and we heard similar comments from a number of people, so these are, this is a summary. We ran a series of stakeholder meetings with folks who organize and operate City Hall, the library, the senior center, and also talk to your sustainability coordinator. So this is just a real quick sort of overview of the key themes, I guess I would say, that we heard from folks. We think it's absolutely critical as we move forward that we're always thinking about universal design, ADA, so we can do better than just meet the letter of the law. We want to make sure everyone is welcome and everyone can use these facilities. Better indoor/outdoor visitor flow for all the facilities has been critical. Sustainable design, you know, you've made a big commitment. Our team is well-positioned with lots of technical talent and expertise and we really are excited about bringing these sorts of ideas to the campus to really position you for the future. Prioritizing walking, biking, and transit, making this a big part of, again, the downtown environment so that it supports healthy movement and active transportation, not just vehicles. Sharing parking, you know, future-proofing that idea that if we're going to start to layer in a variety of different civic facilities, we can start to get some economies of scale for how things operate at different times of day rather than providing parking for each facility separate. We know parking's always an issue downtown. We know drop-off and pickup for elders and others is always critical, so we'll be mindful as we move through the process, but those are things we've heard from the stakeholders. Hubbard Avenue as a flex street or plaza street, the idea that we've got this crosswalk right now as people try to move from one facility to the other across the street, how the street might be able to serve as a real amenity for everybody, not just cars. So we'll be exploring that as we move forward in the project. Greening gardens, the whole idea of meeting and addressing ecological services is important. The community center was, you don't really have one right now, so that came up as, you know, what might that be? What kind of facilities would go in there? We're excited about the notion that that could play a role as part of a shared space and maybe take some of the burden off the other facilities. Variety of flexible gathering spaces, large, small, at rooftops, at the ground level. Integrating public art so that we're mindful and artful in everything we do and we provide opportunities for the art community here in Middleton to be expressed through the design of everything. And then the sort of the multis, multifunctional, multi-seasonal, multi-generational, multicultural is really a key theme that we think we've heard from folks.
Just because I'm, I don't know this term, like the sixth bullet point down Hubbard Avenue is Flex Street, Plaza Street, woo nerf.
Oh, sure. I won't get into the details, but a woo nerf is a facility that comes out of the Dutch tradition of providing a place, they're usually alleyways or backways, but they've also been done as more public ways where you really mix all the kinds of movements together in a space and use things like planters and lighting and other furnishings and site amenities to slow people down, allow them to share a common space, but yet move together. So you become much more respectful and general, the speed limits run about seven to eight miles an hour. So it's a concept where if we look at how we might use the street but keep people moving through it with vehicles, the woo nerf is one technique or one model that we might look at.
Great, thank you.
Sure. And now I'm going to turn it over to Andy to talk about our web platform.
Council members, mayor, thank you for having us in tonight. Andy Lyons from EUA. Wanted to talk to you for a little while, if we could, tonight about this idea of All Our Ideas. The council, city administration and its RFP wanted some sort of online engagement tool. And we use this, All Our Ideas, as that online engagement tool. Anybody have a chance to take the survey or utilize the tool that was sent out? Anyone on the, anyone in the audience? Yes, okay. All right. So just as a real quick bit of background, the tool is a pairwise survey that sets up an A versus B idea and then asks a user to select the idea that he or she prefers. It's a really, really effective way to prioritize different ideas. And then this has some sort of built-in functionality as well that allows users to submit their own ideas. So we began this online engagement with 20 ideas that were kind of seeding the system. And over a 14-day period of time, we opened this up, users generated 30 additional of their own ideas. So we had these kind of 50 randomly generated ideas that were a setup for people to prioritize. Over this 14-day period of time, we had 30,000 votes cast. We didn't have 30,000 people cast votes. We had 30,000 votes cast in this, in this system. I was really, really impressed and surprised actually at the number of people that participated and the number of votes that were cast. And here are the top ideas by quote-unquote winning percentage, expanding the public library, some sort of year-round public market. And then, you know, as Bob was referring to earlier, a number of different kind of public-type spaces, green spaces, utilizing rooftop space as gathering places, a public plaza, community center. There are a number of different ideas here that I would say are operational in nature, but there are a number of ideas also that are good facilities-related ideas that I think we can utilize as we continue the planning process. And I would say that the common theme here is that these are ideas that serve and cut across demographic categories. These aren't kind of single-use type spaces. They bring people together. Ideas 11 through 20, again, recreation center, pedestrian shopping areas, expanded space on, you know, some sort of streetscape for pedestrians, outdoor space for recreation and play, et cetera. Ideas that didn't score terribly well are those that maybe don't necessarily cut across multiple demographics. The dog park maybe would be an example of that. I love dogs, but not everybody, not everybody does. I would note here that mixed-use development did not score well on the survey at all. And I think that's something that we need to dig into a little bit more. We don't really understand what people mean or meant by mixed-use development here. So I think we want to explore that idea a little bit more as we continue down the planning, the planning round.
Mayor, council members, my name is Paul Reisler. I'm an architect with EUA and a project designer. So just let me start out by saying we were not, part of a master plan is we need to understand the facilities that you have in place right now, how you're using them, but we were not contracted to do an in-depth facility assessment. And that means we would hire a structural engineer, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. We would go through with a fine-tooth comb and provide an in-depth report. This was really a space needs assessment where we walked through the building, we talked to the directors, understand how the buildings are being used, how they're meeting the needs now, and what may be the shortcomings to address those 20- or 30-year needs and how those buildings can be flexible. That's the key. So what you're seeing in this graph is, you know, the green represents, okay, the spaces that are in the buildings, they might meet the needs that we anticipate in 20 to 30 years. Yellow is kind of saying, well, maybe not so much, just because of where they are in the building and their size. And red just means these spaces or parts of those buildings are not serving you very well. For example, in all the facilities, we know that you have the original mechanical systems. You're coming into a major mechanical cycle. The original air handling units, with the exception, the library has new boilers. The senior center, there's 12 residential units that are operating that building. So a building that size, that's energy inefficient and again, that's a maintenance burden on you. But the other thing that's really important here is just how people are moving through the buildings and security. For example, in this building, in your city hall, when you come in, you really kind of have to know where you're going other than coming into council chambers. Your receptionists and people up front don't have a view to the entry. They can't see who's coming into the building. You don't have that security point. The senior center, for example, then as well, you can come in and go downstairs before even going past the front desk. And then once you get down there, as we age, we move through and interpret spaces differently. So you come to the bottom of the stairs and you have to choose between two ways to go downstairs and all the rooms are basically one giant room. So there's some planning challenges with that, with that building.
And as Paul indicated, while we weren't contracted to do a really detailed facilities analysis, we did want to do a little bit of surface exploration as to existing space utilization in the community campus area. So we looked at some utilization data from the public library and found that it is, as you all well know, it is a heavily, heavily utilized space. Programming is very, very robust, both at the adult level and at the children's level over the last eight years or so. Programming, the number of programs has increased by about two and a half times or so at the library. Lots of utilization of those small conference and individual study spaces in the, in the library. Big year-over-year increases in the usage of those spaces. Wi-Fi connection, as you probably already would surmise, has increased substantially over the last five years at the, at the library. And circulation, over the short term at least, is trending upwards. Over the midterm, it is, it is down a little bit, not down quite as much as the state average, but over the short term, it is trending up again. Generally speaking, circulation is very robust at the, at the, at the library. We wanted to do the same for the senior center. We took a look at some of the budgetary information for the senior center for, I believe, this upcoming fiscal year and found that, at least according to projections, senior center staff are anticipating a 31% increase in daily participation from '16 to 2020 and a 38% increase in the number of volunteers that participate or support senior center activities. And while we didn't have available data for this particular facility, we did, as Paul indicated already, have conversations with city staff and they all noted the lack of office space in particular for professional space and the dwindling amount of space for LTE employees and part-time employees.
So a part of the master plan, we have to figure out how big the containers are. And that's really what our charge is, to understand how big the containers are, but keeping a mind for flexibility and addressing emerging technologies in 20 or 30 years. And part of this whole conversation, we had a great meeting with the sustainability director and we really understand clearly the direction and the values that Middleton holds to be a sustainable community, so we're folding that into the master plan as well. And really, as we go through the program areas, these are a benchmark, a place to start right now. For example, the library, you completed a study in 2016, very thorough, identified a size for the library. So we just really summarize that in this table. Then moving into city hall, we have pretty clear floor plans of who you have in the building right now and the meeting spaces. So we replicated that in this spreadsheet. And you see that the area usable is right around 27,000 square feet. The senior center, right now, it's about 20,000 square feet, a little bit under, but their program uses are really calling for additional space for different programs, flexibility of programs, and what they can provide. So that bumped that up to about 30,000 square feet. And in all these programs, we are tracking meeting space because that's something that is at a premium in Middleton. And there is that, that, that need. The community center, again, that could be a revenue-generating opportunity, so this is a great time to talk about that and plan for it in the master plan. And what is occurring now is all the department heads are taking a look at these spreadsheets. And we've identified all the meeting spaces and everything in each container, if you will. And they're going through now and trying to really take a look at staffing needs, like what might they need for future growth. But most importantly, in resilient buildings and buildings that are flexible for the future, we try to avoid having single-use spaces. We need to have flexible spaces. We need to find those spaces that can be shared so we can pull them out of each program or space plan, container, whatever you want to call it, and put it in one single space. And the goal there, and I would anticipate, these numbers would begin to come down a little bit. For example, the table at the bottom, taking a look at all these pieces together, the gross square foot, that's the outside of the buildings, is right around 180,000 square feet. But again, that's a benchmark and we're looking at refining those numbers now as we go forward and move into the master plan process.
Questions, comments? Because we can wait to talk about our next step if you want to go through this information or I can just go and tell you what, where we're going next.
Do you like, anybody has questions or should we go to the next phase?
Keep moving? All right.
Let's go.
We're on the move. So again, as part of our planning process and getting as much input as we can from people as we do this, we are proposing to run a two-series workshop in, I think it's a Thursday, October 10th. And Abby has allowed, secured space over at the senior center. We'll be in the depot room and we'll be running from sort of over the lunch hour to try to get folks who might be working downtown and visiting downtown for a couple of hours. And then we'll kind of take a break and we'll come back and we'll do another round from about 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. The idea there is capturing people on their way home from work or on their way home from school or, and that sort of thing. So what are we going to do? The idea is to provide hands-on, small-group activities for people to kind of explore and discuss ideas and provide input into our planning team. And we're, this will be a very directed kind of experience. It's not just about sitting down and having a chat. So the four items that you see here are in the sort of what I'll call planning stage by our team. The first one, and we've done all these before with other communities on similar projects, so we know we will get meaningful input when we do these things. So you see the photograph on the upper right and maybe some of you have participated in these kinds of planning processes before. EUA has developed a physical model of the project space to scale and we will have building blocks that will allow people to start to play with stories, height, massing, scale. Can we put all of the program that we're working on on one site and make it a multi-story building? Do we go on two sites and maybe have a sky bridge? How do we deal with surface parking? So this part of the project activity allows us to really be more physical in terms of massing and scale and shape. The second one is about dealing with more of what I'd call the aesthetics and the character of a community campus plan and new, new buildings. So we'll have photographs, we'll have precedent images from various places that people have either brought to our attention or were aware of and start to get input from people on sort of what they might want to see in the inside of this new place to be or the exterior. So this will give us some ideas about community character and physical, physical design. There's been discussion, as I've explained, on what a woo nerf is, on reimagining Hubbard Avenue. Maybe at the end of the day, it's just fine the way it is, but we want to take this opportunity to start to look at, could that street maybe, again, serve multiple functions? Might it be as simple as having integrated public art that allows us to close the street down and have it be a, you know, a plaza street in the afternoons or on the weekends? Or might it be a green space that people move along on, you know, pedicabs and bicycles and by foot? So all of those things, we will have tools that allow people to start to see the outcome of those various options. And then lastly, the idea of a, if you've ever played SimCity or other kinds of online tools, this we actually do physically by using photographs and almost like trading cards of different opportunities, different types of buildings, different types of spaces and program elements and allow people to locate those in space. So those are four of the ideas we think will work well and we may have more. So at this point, we'll go back and ask, answer questions.
Yes, Katie.
This is very exciting, by the way. So thank you for all of these ideas. This woo nerf is also very intriguing. How far on Hubbard Avenue do you envision this? Does it start at Parmenter? Does it go all the way to Burke Street?
Exactly. We don't know. So I think, you know, that's really an important question to be looked at. You know, is it just in front of these two buildings? Does it go from one end of the block to the other? We really start to impact private properties and commercial space. So yeah, that's a really good question and I think that's, again, part of what we want to look at as part of the campus plan.
Okay, thanks.
More questions? Robert?
Well, I think it's brilliant too, but I don't know. I look forward to participating in some of these planning workshops.
Well, we're glad you've committed to come.
Yes, Katie.
I have a question for the mayor. Being a part of the arts committee, I know that our, our goal of having sculpture and public art, we have, we have to fundraise for these art pieces. In this situation, would a piece of public art be included in the budget for this or would it be also a separate piece that we would fundraise for?
Well, let's hear from these guys. What do you think?
Well, so a couple of thoughts on that. One is the approach we'd like to propose to folks is to think about public art as an integrated element and also think not just integrated, meaning it's part of the space you're in, but it may also be part of what you're sitting on or part of the stairway you're walking down. And so the idea of having artists involved in creating products and places, not just in terms of freestanding artwork, allows for probably a little more holistic affair and then embeds that activity into the cost of those facilities, right? That is to say, there is still not maybe a good idea to have a percent or whatever it might be for art in terms of, you know, just visual, you know, enhancement, whether it's sculpture or, or, you know, 2D kinds of stuff. And we do have Findorf and Sons on our team and I've been on the board of directors of a public art organization for a number of years. So we have the ability to kind of run some numbers and win conversations with everybody to kind of take a look at that.
Excellent.
Now, Katie is very passionate about art and I think art is a very important part of life. So, you know, we will have to find some ways, you know, to, we talked about fundraising, some of those other things. It could be a combination of various things to make it happen, so.
Actually, I'd like to add, when we built the police station, we did include public art in it funded by the city. I think it was about 50,000 for the stained glass windows, which are a very integral part of the building.
There you go. So you have a history and a track record for that and the idea that it was integrated because you needed windows anyway, I think is really the, the right direction.
More questions? Katie? Mark?
Exciting.
Okay, well, anyone else? If you, anybody else has any questions for these guys? This is your opportunity, so you still have about two more minutes for me. Actually, about one more minute, so. Well, great job. Thank you for coming over and presenting your material. Really appreciate that.
Right on time. Thank you for having us and again, we look forward to visiting with all of you and your families, your children, your grandchildren, your spouses, bring your dog, come to our, come to our planning conference on the 10th. Thanks.
Awesome. I like that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, it is 7:30, so we can start the next part of the city council meeting. This is the comments from the citizens present, limited to three minutes per speaker, and we start with Elder Susan West.
I would like to request, well, actually, let me start. The police chief sent me and maybe a few of the rest of you a very moving letter about the paradigm shooting that occurred last year at this time. And I would like, and in that letter, he is asking that we support methods for gun control and so on. I would like to ask the council to support a resolution that could go to our state and federal representatives in support of his suggestions.
It's a great idea, yes.
I think it's, actually, I've just learned, it's actually in process for, I think, October 1st.
Yep. I saw the chief's letter and I agree with you. It's about time, so. Anything else, Susan? Okay, so the next speaker is David Jeter. David? There's David.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm here representing myself, but as well the homeowners association of the North Lake neighborhood, to express some ongoing concerns we have about the acres development that is taking place there. This is Redtail Acres. As you all probably know, at the very beginning of the development, we had some concerns about the water issues, primarily the stormwater runoff. So I have a few bullet points. I'm going to just read those directly off in case anybody wants a copy. I did bring a copy for future reference. Currently, significant erosion is occurring where stormwater flows through the North Lake swale, meaning this is a swale that has been part of North Lake's infrastructure for going on 20-plus years. This is the first time, according to residents, that soil has eroded down past the plastic mesh installed where, when North Lake was first developed. This is runoff that is coming from the development. So again, we are seeing significant erosion taking place that didn't exist before. Our understanding from the beginning was that the city would require 100% containment with no discharge onto the North Lake property, yet the outflow from the ponds, which are these retention ponds on the west end of the property, is aimed directly at our property line. So the outflow is, again, coming from the ponds, aimed directly into our neighborhood, so to speak. The size of the two westernmost retention ponds appears to have insufficient capacity to handle even the moderate recent rainfall amounts as both are nearly full. By recent, I am referring to the last week or two. Residents at the western end of the development have reported high water levels with some encroachment onto their lawns during normal rain events. Again, I'm referring to recent rain events. At the beginning of the approval process for this development, the city was informed multiple times of North Lake neighborhood's concerns about stormwater management. Despite obvious shortcomings in this regard, the development appears to be gaining approval for an agreement that looks great on paper but is not adequate. And the agreement I'm referring to, of course, is the Storm Water Management Maintenance Agreement that's on the agenda today. It's Agenda Item Number Two under Agreements. Before a single home has been constructed, stormwater is already negatively impacting North Lake neighborhood. How well can Redtail Acres' infrastructure handle runoff once roofs and driveways are further compromising infiltration? In other words, there's no driveways yet built on the development, there's no houses yet on the development, and yet we're seeing this impact. Therefore, additional reviews and recommendations by county and city erosion specialists would seem to be in order before the Storm Water Management Maintenance Agreement goes forward. And I would just point out that I've been in touch with the county, I've been in touch with Morgan Elliott, who will be on site tomorrow. He is the county conservation engineer. He also has with him, and intends to bring, I believe, a one or more erosion specialists who will be on site. They have had erosion specialists visit before, but it was before this most recent rain event. So I think it behooves the council to consider tabling this, moving forward on this until the county and other officials from the city have a chance to evaluate the situation.
Absolutely.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for David? Thank you, David.
Thank you for your time.
So the next one is Tony. Yeah, yes, Tony. You got on.
Hi, thank you. I will be very brief. My name is Tony Rotano. I own a property across the street from Middleton Center Phase Three project. It's 7509 Terrace Avenue. It's the greenhouse with all the gingerbread on it. I would like the council to take into consideration the fact that any exterior lighting on the Terrace Avenue side of any building going up there will shine into the bedrooms on any residence that's on that opposite side of the street. So I would just request the council limit any exterior lighting that's approved on that side of the building, especially in the evenings. I guess the daytime wouldn't really matter much, but. Has anybody have any questions? That's really, I've always been very sensitive to light and anything for that property.
Yes, Katie, yeah, of course.
Yeah, Tony, did you have any problem with foundation when they were digging pylons?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they came and took pictures and stuff, but it's, the foundation tends to be, there's crumbling and dust and stuff. It's a limestone foundation. It's 150 years old. It's, you know, the train's been going through there for 150 years, and it didn't seem to be a problem before, but it seems to be a little bit now, so. I'm just waiting, you know, they haven't gotten to that side yet, so once it happens on that side, I don't know what's gonna happen, but we'll, we'll see.
I love your house. It's very cool.
Thank you. I put a lot of work into that house. Anybody else?
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you all, very much, I appreciate it. 7509 Terrace. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so the next one is Josh Hellbach.
Hi. Hi, council. I'm Josh Hellbach. I'm here representing Hellbach's Coffee Roasters and Kitchen. We're kind of new here in the neighborhood. I just came by with Middleton Center Phase Three being reviewed by the council for parking and everything. I just kind of wanted to come and say that we have about 20, like 250 people come through our coffeehouse every day. About 60% of them are driving. And one of my biggest concerns actually moving there and opening up was parking. And that concern really has fallen by the wayside. I can count on maybe one hand how many times people have had trouble finding parking in downtown Middleton. So I thought I'd come by and kind of just share that with you as a guy that's, you know, making coffee for people every day when you're reviewing the plan for the new building. Any questions?
Any questions, Kathy, or anyone else? So you don't really have any issues with parking? So you park on that roadside on Hubbard Avenue?
Yeah, I, so on Hubbard, and then there's parking for patrons' residence underneath. And the same kind of parking schematic is proposed in the new building, and it's worked out extremely well.
So Josh is happy, it looks like?
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right. Thank you, Josh. Okay, so the next one is drainage issues, then this is Nicholas?
Yeah.
Nikolai. Nikolai Porter. It is Nikolai, right?
No, it's Nicholas. Apparently, I don't write very well. Apologize for that.
Well, I do it all the time, so I guess we are about equal now, so Nicholas.
I'm here to speak about the drainage issue that would be coming through the North Lake neighborhood. I think, me being at the corner of Park and Sand Hill, I'm one of the lower houses in the neighborhood. And in the early years, this goes back 20 years, there were some heavy rains and the rain would come up from that swale up to, towards the back of the house. It didn't come up to the house, but it was coming close to the house. And I would hate to see that kind of event happen in the future. There were three bales of straw that did come down the swale, and I think they came from that housing development. And I have to confess, my grandkids enjoyed spearing it with the sticks that came with it. So it wasn't a total loss for them. Thank you for this opportunity.
They had a good time, didn't they? So, well, thank you. Well, now we have, the last one is Sustainability Committee member Richard Lathrop.
Thank you. My name's Dick Lathrop. Last night, we had a Sustainability Committee meeting, and one of the issues that Kelly Hilliard brought up was Yehara Clean Compact. And this is something that Clean Lakes Alliance has been promoting, is Yehara Clean Compact Three. I've actually been involved with this process in the very beginning. Those of you who know me, I'm a limnologist, water scientist with the DNR, retired, but I have an honorary appointment at the UW. And I've been engaged with the Clean Lakes Alliance as a volunteer since their inception back around 2010. They have asked Middleton to become a partner, which is a coordinator, sustainability coordinator, and that would require $1,000, I think, per year for two years. And I could say that there's a whole bunch of entities that have already bought into it. This has gone all the way up to the chancellor at the university, so the University of Wisconsin is going to be a major partner, DNR, DAT cap, Dane County, the City of Madison. So being a coordinator at least keeps Middleton in the game here, be able to go into meetings and being a part of various communications and things. Our Sustainability Committee, we have a small budget, which we thank you for. We approved the $1,000 because we understand that the Water Resources Commission has no budget, and we offered for, to pay that $1,000 because we think it's really important. I look at the lakes from the lake science point of view, but really, the problems are up here in the watershed, and Middleton, Pheasant Branch watershed is a big contributor. And actions that will clean up the lakes actually are part of holding runoff back too. So I think it's really important that Middleton be a part of this compact in a formal way in the coordinator role. It's only $1,000. So as I understand it, you will be asked to vote on that maybe at your October 1st meeting, but this is a heads-up about it. Any, any questions?
Any questions for Dave? He is the expert on lakes. He has been on, dealing with the water issues for a long time. That's excellent idea, and it's good to warn them so they can be ready for October 1st. Thank you, Dex.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Well, you have an opportunity. Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting, and we move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Okay, Robert, no changes?
No changes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, there's unanimous. And Luke, you also are in favor, right?
Correct.
All right, the way to go. So we are on to proclamations, and we're going to start with the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Proclamation, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas, September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas, suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CDC Center for Disease Control, each year, more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the US and the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 24. And whereas, Middleton, Wisconsin is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being valuable to one another. And whereas, local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance for Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that may still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness unfortunately remain a taboo topic to discuss. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that through our life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by the gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or a hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Gurdeepa, Mayor of City of Middleton, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Middleton. This proclamation was adopted at the regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on the 7th day of September 2019. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes. Yes, Mike?
Mayor, I just wanted to take this opportunity. I know council members usually have work during the day, but for our United Way and community share campaign this year, we're starting a week from today, or tomorrow, on Wednesday, September 25th, with the kickoff luncheon right here. And our theme, we have two speakers, one from the National Association of Mental, Mental Health, Mental Illness, and another, our EAP, which is Employment Assistance Provider and Employee Assistance Provider, who is with the Family Service Agency and provides those services to the city, including mental health-related services. So you're welcome to attend, participate, and have lunch with us here next Wednesday, starting at 11:45.
Thank you, Mike. Free lunch?
Free lunch, and you're also welcome to bring a side dish.
Yes. Okay, so the next one is the proclamation celebrating Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month of September 15 through October 15, 2019. And this was suggested by Elder Emily Kuhn. Whereas, the City of Middleton is fortunate to be an ethnically diverse community, and many of our residents have roots in and cultural ties to Latin America. And whereas, Hispanics and Latinos have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our community in the United States, and have enriched every facet of our national and local identity with traditions that reflect many diverse Hispanics and Latino ancestors. And whereas, this month gives us a chance to honor the many heroes who have contributed to the struggle for freedom and justice for all. And whereas, the history of some of the United States is the history of all, all of us, and our history is what shapes us as a city, a state, and a nation. And whereas, Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month encourages all of Middleton to come together, reflect on our collective past, and reveal its impact on present conditions, since we as the City of Middleton are striving towards equity for all our citizens. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gurdeepa, do hereby proclaim, and the Milton Common Council acknowledges the many contributions that our Hispanic and Latino residents make to our city, and we recognize and celebrate Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of we recognize and celebrate Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in the City of Middleton. This proclamation was adopted at the regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on the seventh day of September 2019. Need a motion to approve?
I move approve.
Okay, second. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes. Is there anybody to accept these proclamations, or we send it to them, or? Okay. Give it to Lori to pass them along. Okay, we are on to agreements. Number one, Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement with Conservancy Bend Residences LLC and Conservancy Bend Town Homes LLC, Palmetto Street.
Motion to approve the stormwater management system for Conservancy Bend Residences.
Need a second.
Second.
Contingent upon? Thank you. Contingent upon the city attorney and Dane County figuring out any details.
Yes. And fixing some type. Yes. Okay. Susan?
Has this gone to Water Resources, Water Resources Commission?
I, Sean, do you know if it has gone to the Water Resources?
Not that I know of. I think this is coming just as a staff referral.
But you would think, I remember reading something about it. Water Resources would have looked at it, would they not?
Ordinarily, they'll look at the stormwater management plan, which is the set of features that the developer intends to provide to meet the statutory and ordinance requirements for stormwater management. These agreements tend to be fairly boilerplate that then lists those features and extends in perpetuity the developers' promise to maintain these features.
Although this one goes further, it divides the responsibilities between two different developers over stormwater management.
And that is my understanding of why it's to the city attorney to make sure that, because it's effectively a two-and-a-half-party agreement instead of a two-party agreement, which is our standard, that we need some special language, and I think we've run into that on a past project, but that's not a really standard thing. It's not as much a policy question as a legal question, I think.
Are you okay with this?
Generally, yes. I mean, I have no idea what the appropriate proportionate shares are and how the responsibility should be divided. I've seen nothing, so I have no basis for evaluating that.
I don't know that either. I can tell you what I have reviewed.
Okay. Susan, do you have a question?
Oh, so you have a local expert.
Sorry. If you don't mind, just while I answer that, Larry, so I worked with Matt Fleming on this specifically, Assistant City Attorney, and he confirmed the percentages are based on land area, which we thought was a fair proration. And this is identical to the stormwater maintenance agreement that the council and Plan Commission approved for the Masters, which is in Bishop's Bay, back this past spring, whereby there were, actually in that case, there were three developer entities involved in one city. And again, the boil down is that there's one responsible party involved in this agreement. So the developer, so there's one developer that we've elected to be responsible, the responsible party. So.
And Susan?
Okay, so Sean, my question is, did the plans for how the stormwaters manage go to Water Resources then?
I think that that did, the stormwater management plan.
But you're not sure?
I'm not positive of that. Normally Gary handles all those kinds of things, these developer issues, and especially stormwater issues as he staffs those committees. And we just don't have the time to try to duplicate that level of effort. So normally, when we put these things on the agenda, we'll say where it's coming from, and this is staff.
That's why I'm asking it. Doesn't imply that it's us.
That's my best guess. I don't know that.
So it did go to Plan Commission, right? It says PC 2565?
No, I'm sorry, that's a file number.
Oh, that's a file number?
Yeah, it's a Plan Commission file number, but not the Plan Commission itself.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
Sean, could you remind council why these go to Dane County?
We send them to Dane County for technical review of both our ordinances and their ordinances, but then also to check it out for conformance with state administrative code. These three things all regulate stormwater management, and we need to make sure that planning for how a development deals with stormwater management, both in terms of quality and quantity, satisfy the applicable requirements.
Do we do any subsequent review after it comes back from the county or before it goes to the county in terms of whether this would actually work in a practical setting?
Generally, staff reviews it. Sometimes if it's complex, the Water Resources Management Commission also reviews it. But our staff and Water Resources Management Commission review usually precedes the Dane County staff review, so that we kind of already know or have fleshed out the issues with the developer before sending it off to the county for their review.
Any other questions for Sean or anyone else?
Do we need to refer this to a different body?
I would like to see it referred, referred, I mean, this is a critical location affecting the Creek Corridor, and I want to be sure that it's fully functional.
And I just want to reiterate the difference between what's on this agenda and the stormwater management plan. The stormwater management plan says we've looked at all the requirements, and our plan is that these facilities will meet those requirements. This maintenance agreement says after it's built and after it's functional, from then on, once it's working, if something else happens in the long term, this requires that the responsible party take positive steps. Number one, to check out these facilities on at least a semi-annual basis. It's actually annually the first two years and thereafter semi-annually. And then, or is it biannually? Every two years?
Biannually.
Biannually. See, I got myself lost. It's not more frequent, it's less frequent thereafter. But then not only have that checked out by a professional to certify that effectively, yes, it is working as intended, if it's not, to take action to remedy the default.
It's not a plan. It's an agreement, maintenance agreement, so that's quite the difference.
An enforcement agreement.
Yes.
Effectively right. That says, this is what was built, let's make sure it actually works going forward.
Every two years it has to be?
Yeah, that part I understand. I just want to be sure it gets built correctly, so whatever gets built has to agree with this.
Right, so we didn't even start these till, I think, 2005. Developments that predate that don't have these. They're just on their own, and by handshake and hope, we trust that they're taking care of their stuff. But we don't have a tool that says they must take care of their stuff. This is fairly new.
Yeah, this is mandated by Dane County, and our covenant is not exactly the same as Dane County's, but it's, the way we do it has been approved by the county, and this is now a standard requirement.
So you would say since this is a maintenance agreement, not a plan, so you don't have issues with this, as long as you and Matt take care of it?
I don't know of any if you want to refer it back to the commission. I don't know of any policy issues embedded in this. It's fairly boilerplate that says on this frequency, they'll check these things, on this frequency, they'll file a report. If they find something deficient, they're going to take care of it, and if they don't, here's what happens.
Okay. Katie?
Susan, is it feeling like it's a cart before the horse kind of thing for you?
A little bit on that and not having adequate information about what was approved, if we've approved it.
The plan or the maintenance agreement?
The plan.
Okay, so that's a different thing.
Okay, so do we, the vote is approved? Oh, yes, Mike?
Gary Huth informed us at the staff meeting last week that the Water Resources Commission had approved the plan. This, as I understand it, is recorded, runs with the land, it's our official means by which we can enforce, and perhaps even put a lien on the property, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry?
Correct.
That would require that a problem be fixed. Like Sean said, prior to 2005, we didn't have a mechanism like this. But once it runs with the land, it has that ability to provide a lien that requires the problem to be fixed.
So it's actually important that we approve it then?
The Water Resources Commission approved on June 19th.
Okay.
They've approved the plan, right?
The plan. So we've typically done these administratively, brought them to the council, not coming from any one committee.
Sometimes I have seen this even in the consent agenda, some of the stormwater.
They usually are in the consent agenda. You asked me not to put any of them on the consent.
I know.
I asked that they not be in the consent agenda, so that they could be individually considered, but everything that people have said is correct in the sense that they're, other than the details of the obligations which are specified in the agreement. And this one has the paragraph three, which is not in typical agreements, but if we've approved it before and Matt has approved it for this one, I don't have any objection to it.
Susan?
Yeah, I would just ask in the future if, when we're asked to approve these, you can at least state when it was approved by Water Resources Commission.
I think we could make that change administratively without any problem, don't you?
I'm not aware that this, the maintenance agreement went to the Water Resources Management Commission.
I'm not talking about the maintenance agreement.
Oh, the plan?
The plan for how they're going to manage stormwater.
Okay.
If that could be included, so that we know that the plan has been approved.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this should be the last step.
Yeah, right.
Which makes perfect sense.
Yes, Mike?
Okay.
So in practical, in practical terms, if the council chooses to reject a stormwater management system maintenance agreement, what effect does that have on the development? Does it stop the developer from building until one is successfully passed?
This doesn't really spring in until after stuff is built, and it's, it requires maintenance, it's not working, it requires inspection, that sort of thing. So we want this to ensure that continuing, going forward for all time, someone's actually going to take care of this stuff that got built.
So the assumption then, what I get, is that a bunch of engineers get together and develop a plan, and the city blesses it, the county blesses it. But what I hear is that there's no mechanism to make sure that it works until after the fact, when you have a maintenance agreement, that's the only recourse the city has is to come back against the maintenance agreement. But there's no mechanism in place to, aside from an engineer's review, to make sure that the original plan, practically speaking, works. Is that correct?
I think afterwards, that's where the certifications come in, those first two annual reports, that says not only is it built in conformance with the approved plan, and appears by all reasonable standards to be working in that regard, but then afterwards, for the first year and the second year, an independent source is looking at that and saying, yeah, this stuff's been taken care of, it's still working as intended. And if it's not, what are we going to do about that?
Well, but that brings up two different issues, right? The first is, you can have performance to the plan, but if the plan is insufficient, then what do we have?
And that's a fair question, and I don't know the answer to that, right? The way that the ordinances and statutes and everything are set up, they're performance characteristics based on design storms. It takes hydrologic modeling and design effort to put that plan together, but there's always...
We have no testing of plans.
It's very difficult to test in the field a design storm, right? So we can volumetrically measure things, we can measure rates of flow, we can measure quantities. What we don't have a good track record of is what is a 10-year, 24-hour design storm at a specific location? We might see that, but if it's a 12-year storm, is it working the way it's supposed to? We start to get a lot of impressions about things, but it's very difficult to legislate that. So a lot of this takes computer work.
More questions for Sean, or, yes, Mike?
Mayor, I just, I'd take the opportunity because the, some communities actually fund stormwater maintenance through their stormwater utility. We are, of course, one of the lowest-funded stormwater utilities in the state, but there are many others that choose to do their enforcement through the stormwater utility.
What do you think, Mark? Yes, Katie?
I think that's problematic, because what you're asking for is people that are on the receiving end of downstream flows to pay for somebody else's mistakes.
No. No, no, that is, that's exactly what this is intended to prevent.
No, I'm talking about the, this is Mike's situation where he's talking about putting this on a stormwater utility.
Yeah.
Well, if that's a policy issue. No, you're talking about adding staff to do the enforcement. I was talking about adding staff to do the enforcement, the compliance measures. For what, the point you were making, Mark, how does this get enforced? How do we bring it into compliance other than through legal action? Which is essentially what we have now, is just the ability to take legal action. You know, the building inspectors can prevent further permits, that kind of thing, expansion, potentially if there's a problem. But if a development's complete and there's a problem with a stormwater maintenance plan other than going by this method with a lien, we don't have additional staff to go out in the field and do compliance.
On a complaint basis, we do.
On a complaint basis. But not systematically.
Katie, you had a question?
Um, no.
Now, it's not for the public input, so it's just for the council and the developers and related people, so, and the city staff. You are not any of the city staff, right? Okay, okay, all right, thank you. The public input was that three-minute section, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Taylor?
Yeah, I mean, to Mark's point, I do, you know, from the developer's standpoint, I mean, we do spend a lot of time and resources from our engineers providing plans and modeling to, you know, the city staff, and I don't know if you touched on that as much as, you know, there's a lot of proof that needs to go into getting the plan in place, so it's not just, oh, let's just throw this plan in place, and then, you're right, if it's a bad plan, then the maintenance doesn't address the bad plan, because then you're just maintaining a bad plan. But I can say that firsthand, you know, we spend a lot of time with these guys, with the city staff, proving, you know, the 50, 100-year rain events and how stormwater would have to be maintained, you know, retained and infiltrate, et cetera. So I know I can speak for this project Conservancy Bend. We spent a ton of time on the stormwater, making sure that we weren't degrading the conservancy nearby.
Luke, you have any questions, or you're okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions? The motion? Yes, Katie?
Given the position that the Conservancy Bend is in, you know, it's right above that trail, are we doing extraordinarily different things for the stormwater?
Yeah, we're doing better than the current site. So we're retaining the water on an underground stormwater detention basin facility underneath the site. So we're holding stormwater, rather than right now, it's, the whole site's pretty much asphalt, and it just all drains towards the conservancy. We're holding that water back, so we're actually doing better stormwater measures than the current site.
Emily?
And isn't that being done in a couple other developments around town?
This is the first. We've done a T-wall, is the underground. We've never done that before, but it definitely...
Jacob Klein has done it, so.
Okay.
So we know it works.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And additionally, we're also adding a rain garden on site, too, which helps detain the water, so.
No, in this case, Water Resources Management Commission has spent a lot of time, Dan knows it, so. So the motion was made on second, is to approve, and all those favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Luke, you are for it, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, move on to item number two. So Mike, it's good that it wasn't under consent agenda, right?
That's what I say.
Storm water management system maintenance agreement with Saint Elsewhere LLC Redtail Acres subdivision.
I'm going to move that we table this. I have found significant issues with the plan. And I'm concerned that if we don't address those issues with the plan, that we're going to be in that situation we just discussed, about having a maintenance agreement that has to enforce something that doesn't work. So I will...
So let's have a second.
I will...
Second.
So I'd like to continue my rant.
Okay.
As, just so people get a flavor for this, of what's wrong with the plan, if you guys can look at the map, that's here on page seven of nine, it says. This is the property that Saint Elsewhere is developing. This is directly adjacent, on the left side of the page, and on the bottom side of the page, to North Lake property. There is no storm water easement on the bottom of the page. For that property, that belongs to the North Lake community, there is no storm water easement. On the left side of the page, there is a swale, which carries water from Highway Q and from the housing lots that are on that left side. That storm water, which one of my residents or constituents described, at the bottom of that swale, there were about six or seven hay bales that were staked into the ground. In the last storm, which was not a 50-year or 100-year storm, of from last Wednesday or Thursday night, three of those hay bales were disrupted and moved 200 yards down onto the North Lake swale, or the North Lake outlots. There was that much water coming from just that side of the development. The two ponds that were there were overtopped, and they too created such volume and velocity of water that the outlots that have been carrying water for the North Lake development for over 20 years were caused to be eroded and scoured. Right? This is something that has never happened.
Mark, has anything been constructed on Redtail?
No.
Even roads?
There are roads there, all 15 lots have not been developed.
So it's...
So this is just...
It's very pervious land.
Yes. Right? So all of the storm water prior to development infiltrated in the hay fields. Now we have a situation where they've gotten a minimal amount of infrastructure in, and this property, this storm water plan, does not work. In fact, it doesn't work so much that it is causing damage to private property downstream. So we have to get this corrected. So that's why I'm moving that we table this.
Okay, any other questions?
Until such time as the developer can come back and figure out how to get this fixed.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mike?
I just wondered if there would be any constructive activity by referring this back to the Water Resources Commission for the plan, since that's the body that approved the plan, relative to the experience that Mark's describing.
Mike, I think it needs a new plan.
So that's why sending it to Water Resources Management Commission maybe?
I don't think our Water Resources Commission should be designing a new plan. That's the developer's responsibility.
But who is going to have the oversight, who will discuss it?
And then it will need to come back to Water Resources for approval.
So, what do you want, Mike? So, Mark, do you want to send it to Water Resources?
Well, there's two issues. There's a tabling of the maintenance agreement. And then if you're asking for a referral to Water Resources to tell the developer to create a new plan, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so discussion on the second motion, so I think seemed like simple. So, all those in favor of the motion to send it to Water Resources Management Commission, say aye?
No, it's a motion to...
Aye.
I'm with you, Luke.
It's a motion for the developer to come up with a new plan to submit to Water Resources.
Water Resources already signed off on this plan, so if there's an issue, it should go back to Water Resources so that the developer can come to Water Resources and they can discuss it and work some kind of plan. Otherwise, the developer already feels as though he's got an agreement, so he needs to come back and talk to, he needs to come back and talk to our experts.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Right? I think Water Resources needs to understand that the plan that's in existence failed.
Yeah.
And that the developer should, I think we should figure out how to work with the developer to get a new plan.
Okay.
Starting by bringing it to Water Resources.
Yes. Okay, so, any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion, including Luke, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Luke.
Aye.
Okay. And now the second motion is to table it, so any further discussion on the tabling? So, all those in favor of the motion to table it, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause? Luke, you are for it, right?
Correct.
Okay, unanimous.
Trying our best.
Okay, storm water manag, we are on to item number three. Storm water management system maintenance agreement with Middleton Market LLC, 762 to Liza Lane.
Motion to approve the storm water management system maintenance agreement for Middleton Market.
Okay. Need a second. Yeah, this has gone through almost two years, you know, and... So any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to pause? Well, Luke, you are aye, right?
Or.
Yes, yes, all right, so, okay, unanimous.
Could you just ask him what his vote is, as opposed to telling him, asking him whether he's voting yes?
Thank you, thank you, good idea, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Storm water management system maintenance agreement with DMG Holding LLC, Goben Karz, 7613 Century Avenue.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Luke, what's your vote?
Aye.
Very good, very good.
Unanimous, thank you, Mark. We are on to item number five under agreements. Storm water management system maintenance agreement with Compass Properties Damming Way LLC, Asset Place, 181850 Damming Way.
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
And Luke, your vote is?
Aye.
Thank you. It's actually, you know, jovial.
I don't, it shouldn't appear that you're asking him to vote in the affirmative when you have...
I agree, I agree with you, so it just was, that's a delayed response. Okay, we are on to the budget. Authorizing the use of 2019 election budget funds for the purchase of express vote machines.
I'll move approval, it's recommended by finance.
Second.
These are good things, Lori, right? You would like them, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
And Luke, you are, what's your vote?
Aye.
Well, technology enables, and a technology also has some humorous...
I was thinking that, yes.
Okay, item number two. Authorizing the ordering of better book electronic poll books for use during the 2020 elections.
I'll move approval, it's recommended by finance.
Second.
So Lori, that will make you happy, right? Okay, any question?
Katie? Yeah, I just, I don't know what, has anyone seen these? I just don't know what it looks like, an electronic book.
It's really cool. My mom worked as a poll worker in another state, and they have them, and it's really efficient. It's easy to use and learn to use, and I'm really excited to hear more about the tech. But Lori, tell us about this version.
And security is...
Yes, and security is very important, yes.
Yes, Lori, this is your chance, too.
Make it shine, yeah.
So they are like a tablet on a stand, that then the users can both use from both sides, so the voter themselves can find right on the pad or the notebook. Security is, they're not hooked up to the internet, they're not hooked up to anything. I download something in my office, which is essentially the poll book, and we upload them onto these devices at the polls. So they're never hooked up to any internet or anything during voting hours. And then afterwards, we just take the information and plug it in, and our life is good.
And then the voting machines, do they get backed up with paper ballots, or no?
For the number one?
Yeah, the...
The express votes?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so those will replace the handicap machines that we have now, the automarks that nobody uses. These will be really nice, because yes, we will never run out of ballots. So if we do run short of ballots on Election Day, any type of ballot, they'll be able to just punch in a number, vote on the screen, and it essentially prints their ballot on a sheet of paper that then they can put into the voting machine, so.
Great.
We'll never have to worry about running out and counting paper ballots.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Lori? So is everybody all ready to make Lori happy? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you, Luke. Okay, we are on to miscellaneous. Yeah, this is the, the councilman, this is the ideas for complete census count for 2020. So 2020 is around the corner, and we have to form a census complete committee, and Daphne did a great job in putting this together, along with the timeline. So I would like to have some representative from each district. So we were thinking that, how many should it be? Should it be two or three? I think minimum is two, but maybe three. So, and then of course, there will be a larger committee. So these are going to make sure that every person, from baby to grownups, are counted. So there are some areas, you know, you already read the memo there, that the immigrants, you know, they're afraid, and there are little babies, they can also be left out, so, and there are... So we want to make sure that everyone who is living in Middleton is counted. So would like your ideas and your help, so let's start. Emily, you've got some thoughts here.
Wow, that's awesome. I think it's really important, and if we're doing outreach, we should definitely make sure that we're including some places where people go, so like churches and doctors' offices, even if you're just putting up a poster. Because if a baby is getting their immunizations, they will be at a doctor's office, or you could, the school system, let them know, and probably go back to old school, knock indoors. Happy to help any way I can.
Okay, yeah, so, so other ideas? So I would be asking you to, you know, nominate...
Personally count, myself?
No, nominate people from your district who are really, you know, would love to go out and talk to people, yes.
Isn't the federal government supposed to take care of managing and administering the census?
We are helping the government here, so they're asking the city to help out with this.
It's how, I'm guessing it's more just an information, like look for the flyers kind of thing? Like look for it and respond?
Yes, Daphne, you want to come? Now, Daphne is our associate planner, and she's heading, or she's helping out with this, this count committee, so.
Hi, council members. Yeah, so I can explain a little bit more about what Middleton is doing. So the federal level, the US Census Bureau, has asked Middleton to partner with them to do a complete count in Middleton, and so that would consist of creating a complete count committee. And this is important, because it is definitely a way for the city to continue being, you know, inclusive and active, because it's specifically asking us to, you know, reflect on our city and see, you know, what areas or what people groups, you know, don't really participate. You know, the people who just like maybe work, or have like their kids, and you know, they're just too busy, and so they don't come to meetings like this. So we want each of you guys to think about, you know, specific groups or people, or specific areas, like... I was talking to the mayor last week about this, and he was mentioning a lot of apartment buildings, where people don't get counted, or, you know, they're just not as involved, because they don't own a house, so they don't come to these things. And so we're asking you guys to help us, and then also reach out to people in your communities to see this as a step of getting more involved with local government.
That's great.
So they're asking some of us to actually conduct the count?
No, so it is what Emily was saying earlier, just like reaching out to people, letting them know that the census is out there. You know, a lot of people aren't really sure, there are a lot of questions in the news lately about the census, and so just being able to inform them and provide them with the information they need, so that they will go and complete the census.
So should we have some sort of a campaign on the website, like, you count, you know, like?
That's cute.
I don't know.
I think these people will go through the training process, there is a census bureau...
Right, but like, what if we...
But you're right, so...
Hold out, like, we want people who aren't necessarily citizens to know that they actually count. Yeah, definitely.
And we do have to also build in some trust, is my guess, because especially as, maybe people who don't have English as a first language may be worried as government officials are knocking on their doors, and we need to make sure that they understand that it's the census, and we're just, we're just getting information to move forward, so we can do good policy planning down the road, at the federal level, and the state level, and the local level. Because if you know how many people you have, the budget funds come along with it, and it goes from there.
Emily has a point, like if Susan was to go and talk to some people, they have a trust, they know her, and just like Robert, Kathy, so it's just, you know, I mean, other people who are known in the community. So, but if somebody from elsewhere shows up, they don't know anybody, and they say, wow, boy, why, you know? Yeah, so there is a little bit of fear, so this is, you know, could help out, so. Anyway, think about it, we don't have to vote or anything, this is for the discussion, and I would like if you can send me your ideas, or people you would want to point, and also, you know, the areas where you think there may be opportunity to inform people.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure it's clear, it is workers hired by the census that go door to door. They knock, they'll leave information, they may go back multiple times, that they don't, if they have a question about the number of folks, and some folks won't answer the door. So that's the reason for the public education that's necessary to get out. It could be in multiple languages as well, that helps us to get that message out. But if you consider where the census is coming from, they ask us for the data, how many housing units that we have. And in a multifamily unit, they may assume, I don't know, 2.2 people per unit. But if there's actually four in that unit, then there's going to be a missed count. And so the purpose of the public education is to make people understand how important it is to be counted.
Thank you, Mike, for sharing that. I do want to, I want to say thank you for that, because I think it's 70 to 80% of my district are rentals, and from door knocking, we generally have more than two people in a lot of those rentals. And so I'm not saying that you guys don't have that same situation, but I do have a high volume of apartment and renters. So if somebody else has a lot of challenges in trying to get that word out, like, talk to me, maybe we can work together, share ideas, share ideas with mayor.
But Susan, you are right, that it will be the census bureau who will hire the people and... But Susan, you are right, that it will be the census bureau who will hire the people and they will go around.
The concern is that we have non-citizens who are concerned if they answer, respond to the census, that they could be arrested, deported, whatever. We need to make that clear, that's not the values of this community.
So that's why people who are trusted will make a, make a big difference, Daphne.
Yeah, so I, I recently also attended like a webinar that the census had. And so um, they stated that on the 2020 census at least, that, you know, the citizenship question, um, anything, you know, kind of related to that will not be asked. So um, you know, completing the census will not put any of those people in jeopardy.
We know that, but I can certainly understand why, given all sorts of statements made in, let's say, the social network world, um, things have been stated that still add a lot of confusion and fear to.
Sure.
Many people. Um, the other thing I guess I wanted to bring up is, yeah, I think what we need here is, yeah, obviously the clear demarcation between what the federal census workers are doing and what we're talking about doing. And then what we're talking about doing is a lot of messaging, it sounds like.
Yep, yep.
Is, we need to figure out what that message is, we need to have, you know, if we're, if that's what this is, having a team of people come together to figure out what are the messages we want to get across. You know, that's different than just people who are going to be, you know, posting something up on, you know, going, going and posting stuff at local restaurants and, and whatever. Um, it's, we're gonna need a team of people who, who are basically sitting around tables to say, what's the best way to get this message out, what is the message? Um, we have, you know, anybody assigned in city staff who's gonna be kind of assisting that group of people with, with coming together with ideas. And I'm not sure, right now, I guess it just feels like it's a little undefined as to what we're trying to accomplish here. I think what we're trying to accomplish is a fantastic goal. I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, all on the same page as to what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think it's really based around messaging and how to get that message out once we have it.
Absolutely. The census bureau has been asking me, um, form a census count committee, since, complete count committee has been almost for six months.
Oh wow.
So, so it's just, uh, you know, so I want to discuss it, share it with you and see what ideas you have. So I'm sure they will have some ideas to share as well, so. Anyway, so any thoughts, you know, keep on going, so, keep on sending, so. Okay, we are on to item number two under miscellaneous. This is the selection of executive recruitment forum to assist with the recruitment for the position of police chief.
I'll move approval as recommended by personnel and finance.
I'll second it.
Okay, so this is to recommend for, uh, one of the companies recommended by the police commission, so.
The company is Gov HR.
Gov HR, okay, so we are recommending Gov HR, so. Any questions or comments? With the police commission recommended that unanimously last night, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Thank you. So it's unanimous. We are on to the ordinances. The first reading, final action may be taken upon approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 Milton General ordinances. An ordinance to mend parking restriction on Lee Street.
Motion to approve the, uh, amendment to the parking restriction on Lee Street as recommended by Public Works and LNO.
Second.
Okay, you are not suspending the rule, this is the first reading then, right? Okay.
I, I'm not sus- I'm not suspending.
Okay, alright. Uh, the motion is to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the parking restriction on Lee Street. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or the motion passes unanimously? Ordinances, second reading, this is the final. Ordinance to mend unused sick leave, section 27.2, follow the Milton Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve the amendment to unused sick leave.
Second.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, any discussion? Anything more you want to add, Mike or anyone else? Okay, so the motion, this is the final, this is second reading. The motion is to approve the amendment to unused sick leave, section 27.2, follow the Milton Code of Ordinances, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion is unanimous. Planning zoning. Item number one, amendment to the approved Milton Center parking management plan.
I make a motion to deny the amendment to the parking plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's, the discussion begins. So Kathy, you want to start?
Yes, um, I guess I'm just amazed at the extent in which you, the, the parking plan has been disregarded and what was agreed to. What I come up with, we agreed to at the beginning, 334 shared parking spots. According to your plan, you want to reduce that to 117 and then have 238 reserved parking spots. That's two-thirds of them being reserved and our part, we never had any question about that they would be shared parking. Mr. Hallbuck was here today talking about how, how he's happy with the parking that he has. I just don't think that the Middleton Center has matured enough that he, he has all the customers that he, he, I'm sure he would love to have more customers. And in that, then it goes, he need, he'll need more parking.
Taylor.
Yeah. So, you know, we went through this with planning commission. I believe you're at most of the planning commission meetings where we discussed this. Um, you know, there's planning at the beginning of development and then we've got to adapt to what we see. What we've planned for isn't the reality. So we're therefore needing to adapt to what our tenants need. Um, I think what you're expressing is the retail perception, not the reality.
What I'm expressing is that there may be differences, but the fact that you just went ahead and took it upon yourself to go ahead and just disregard the what we, what we agreed to. If you have changes, come back and we can talk about it.
And that's what we're here to do, the, so the, the, just one second. So the third TIF amendment did anticipate that for our phase three SIP, we'd be coming back to amend the parking management plan. We knew this was gonna happen. We knew that we'd have to adapt to see how things happen. Back when this plan was adopted, for example, there was no Uber, there was no Lyft. That's been a huge change and shift in the apartment rental market. There's been a huge shift in car demand. So what we're seeing is, we're responding to the fact that our new plan and the deficit that you're referencing takes into account, I believe, phase three or the numbers that you're coming up with, which hasn't been started yet, so we're not there yet.
But you want us to approve.
But yes, but, so what, where we're headed is providing a one-to-one ratio for the apartments. So that the apartments all have the, the parking at night. What we find is that, and John has the boards, what we're finding is that there, those parking stalls for the apartments, those aren't being utilized during the day. So, you know, and I think this is part of the 2015 planning process was, you know, with the mixed-use development, with the retail office and apartments, there's varying demand peaks. And we find that your concern, at least as I see it, is for the retailers. Which I, I want to remind you guys, it's like about 5% of the total rentable square feet of our entire development, 5% is the retail. So, so we're, we're concerned about a small sliver of the total demand that's being met for our development. Furthermore, I, I like to bring up, you know, the west, West Town phenomenon, for example. You park at West Town, you park near where Sears was or Dave and Buster's and you walk into, to Pottery Barn. You don't think about it, but that's the, literally the equivalent of going from Middleton Center to almost past, definitely past the city hall. And people don't think about it. But yet, if people can't park right outside of where they want to go, Long Table Fontaine, Journeyman, all these various retailers, they start to have a panic attack.
But what we're talking about is what you agreed to and what you have, what you've done.
And what we're proposing.
Right.
So we're proposing a reduction on the parking because what we're finding is we have all these lift and slide units that aren't being used.
Yeah, they were probably undersized, they were brought too small.
I think what Kathy's saying to me is, and maybe it should be fixed quickly, that uh, you know, in the phase one, it was supposed to be not assigned parking, it was supposed to be shared parking. Kathy, that's your big concern.
None of it was supposed to be assigned.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that is the part which Kathy is referring to, that uh, if, so Kathy.
And the problem with not signing it is that we, we were starting to run into issues where the apartment residents didn't know where to park. What we're trying to do is we're trying to push the re- the apartment residents who, and, and the employees, who are repeat vis- or repeat users, not the occasional visitor. The repeat users, we're trying to push them into the, the parking, the lift and slide parking stall.
But that's why they say reserved parking spots all along the side of the wall. I know that's what you plan on doing. What I'm saying though is, you, you just took the plan and said, well, well, what's, what the heck Middleton, we don't care what, what's your plan.
I mean, I don't think.
What, what we want.
Uh, when you've ta- I, I've surveyed a lot of friends, family that have all loved Middleton Center. I, I think everybody can agree that what's been done to downtown Middleton has been a complete revitalization. It's changed the face of Middleton and it's become a su- a very desirable destination for a lot of people. And all I've heard are comment, positive comments. But, one thing I've heard is that people don't want to go in a parking garage. Regardless of how many stalls, and as I said to planning commission, you could put a thousand standard, not even park and slide, lift stalls. You could put a thousand underground stalls, people are still gonna try to park out front. Always, because it's convenient and it's how we've been trained. In, in the environment that we live in, we're used to Costco. Where you go to Costco and you may park a mile away, but you've got a parking stall and it's huge. You know what I mean?
That it, we're not talking about how far people are walking. We're talking about how many spots were agreed to be provided and shared amongst the people. And what I, my problem is, is that you just, you have, from the get-go, you, you just went, you said, okay, they're not gonna be shared. We have, we're gonna have 238 spots that we're reserving for our tenants.
For our apartment and office tenants, which are more than, oh, probably, yeah, probably more than 95% of the total rentable square feet of the development. You're saying yes, we did reserve it.
And we agreed that after phase three, this may be too many parking spots and then maybe we'll have Walker come in and we'll re- revisit it and see of how, what the parking is, what is required. If you want to have Walker come in and do a study right now and tell us that he, it's okay to have 238 reserved parking spots and he wouldn't, you know, I'm, I'm all ears.
And if that's something that the council desires to have Walker parking study, who's based in California, they have no understanding of what Middleton's like. Actually, most of the parking management study people had never even been to Middleton. I don't, had any of them been to Middleton, John?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, and they.
They did a terrific, or terrific job, that's fine. But what staff found is, we did our own parking analysis, staff did a parking analysis and found a huge vacancy in all the parking stalls. So we didn't find that necessary if, if, if that's something that you, you want to propose, then that's something we could consider.
Okay, so let's see how to, how to go forward. So Kathy, so you have some objections and you guys could find those solutions. Could you get together and solve that issue and?
We've offered to meet with Alder Olson on several occasions and haven't heard anything back.
I went to see it, I went to see it. I've been down there yesterday, I was down there the week before that. I, I don't need to, and I emailed you and told you what my, my position was.
Could we get them to do a parking study?
I would like.
And then before, before we make a decision.
I would like that, yeah. If, if Walker comes back and says that having reserved spots will meet the needs of what's, of the development.
And are we trying to meet the needs of the development or are we trying to meet the needs of the public? Just so I can understand it, cause as far as I'm concerned, if we're not meeting the needs of our residents and our users and our tenants, we're the ones that are harmed, right? We can't get the rent, we can't stay full, we have vacancies, people won't want to pay our rent.
And why did you?
That's not the concern. We're 100% full on the phase one for the retail. We're over 95% on the apartments in phase one. Phase two just opened in May, we're doing terrific.
Right, yeah.
And so, so we're doing great. So that has not been the feedback we've been getting from our users and our renters, is that there's no, that there's not enough parking.
Right. Do you think that this, the development will mature more and have more, more vibrancy? Once they, you know, they get um, programming like at the Plaza and then it's up, it's completely filled?
Okay, Kathy, maybe you would like them to come back later. Then what you would like is, uh, you, you were thinking that if they were to remove the trays and have that as assigned parking and have the rest as shared parking. So that, that sounds okay to you, right?
But they can't do that because they've given the tenants reserved parking on spots that aren't.
No, no, they will give the, they will remove those trays from the lift and those are 53 spots. And what they have given so far is 40 spots, so they still have, would have 13 extra spots there, so.
Well, I've never had a problem with removing the trays from the lifts because no one is using them.
And you guys.
That would be nice to have you come to us when you want to make a change to the plan that you agreed to.
Yeah, and I, I mean, just for your background, we started working with staff back in February, March, on, on this revision. I mean, this is all part of the SIP for phase three is, hey, rather than looking at this forward, forward-looking plan, let's solidify it. So that's why if you notice, the, the new parking management plan, rather than having a bunch of words, eight pages worth of words and, and tables and charts, we show the, the site plans. Hey, here's what phase one looks like, here's where all the stalls are and this is how they'll be divvied up. Here's phase two, this is what phase two's, you know, these ones will be designated for visitors, these ones will be designated for the office and tenant, you know, repeat users. Phase three, this is what phase three looks like, so simplistic. Additionally, we did agree with uh, staff that will continue to honor not charging extra for parking. So as you guys may or may not know, for every other apartment building we have um, in our portfolio, we charge for parking.
For the first spot.
Yep, for, for parking stalls. So parking is included in, in our rent. Um, it's to, to encourage people to not park on the street, but to park in our development.
Okay. I would really prefer to have a, a parking study done before this is, um, any decisions are made. I just, I just feel like this is just too, too soon in the development and I'm not comfortable with um, just going along with the plan that has 117 shared spots.
So Taylor, you guys had agreed to the plan commission that you were going to remove those sign parking signs and you remove those uh, slide trays and use that as a sign parking, right? Abby, is that not true?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so then that will take care of the big part of the problem.
Yeah. So, yeah, there was signage that was put in phase one that will be removed. And you know, what was nice is phase two has created a, a lot of alleviation of the parking concerns cause that's at grade, so people are more comfortable parking there. And that's, I think, 55?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, forty-six stalls, just for visitors. So the tenants all parked below. So there's 98 apartments in phase two and there's how many stalls down below? 169 down below, so.
So Abby, what happened, let's say if it's delayed or, you know, until those things are sorted out, is there any issue? I mean, we can still move on with item number two, right? If it's delayed, what happens? What is, what suffers?
I think the concern with phase three would be that they were initially proposing lift and slide in phase three. And they're asking to remove that requirement because the lift and slide are not functioning well. So I think in order for them to, to, if you were comfortable with approving their SIP with contingencies tonight, you would at least have to be willing to remove the requirement in phase three for lift and slide. The other thing that would be impacted is that what they're proposing in phase three is that all except for 17 of the stalls are tenant parking only. So they're proposing when you pull into the building, hang a left, at grade there, within the building, there would be 17 stalls that would uh, serve visitors to the, the commercial space in phase three at the corner there. But then you enter a garage door and beyond that, that would only be for the residents. And I think if, if we need, if we are going to meet the city's minimum requirement um, that we've ever, as low as we've ever gone for apartment parking, it would be a one per one. So one parking stall per one apartment unit regardless of the size of the unit. In order to do that, they need all of those stalls um, that are, you know, past that garage door to be allocated for those residential users. door, to be allocated for those residential users, just to get to the one per one.
Yeah, and that should be fine, right?
Phase Three is one to one. John, how many are there?
One to one on the apartments, yeah.
Eighty-six stalls.
What do you have to say, like?
On apartments?
About parking.
I'm sure that the developer would be concerned if there were a delay in approving Phase Three, simply because of when they need to get ground broken. I don't know when you plan to do demolition, and how that would impact your schedule. They can respond to that question.
So this one isn't really tied to number two, right? As long as we-
Phase One and Phase Two, the SIP modification was approved by Plan Commission, as a matter of modification. So we're just looking at Phase Three right now, and the SIP approval. As Abby pointed out, we have plenty of parking underground for the apartments. And to Alder Olson's point, you know, I haven't seen people wanting to go down into the garages. So I think it makes sense to have our, our repeat users, our tenants, pulling in the garages. So then we still have 17 stalls that surface at grade for guests of the entire development.
So, any other questions or comments? Yes, Robert?
Getting back to item number one under planning and zoning. I personally, and I think, I think Alder Olson said this too, that I, I'm not, I'm not thinking that the, the lift and slide system is particularly useful there. I personally would not be opposed to moving forward, taking out those trays now, and moving the signs that currently are in the best parking spot, saying that those are reserved parking spots, and moving those to where the lift and slide mechanism is, just to at least incrementally improve what's down there now. And I don't know that I would necessarily choose to wait until any type of possible traffic, or parking study, parking study is done. I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later, because I think that's a net benefit. So that would be what I would recommend, at least for item number one.
So could that be a motion?
Well, I think we're discussing right now-
I wanted to correct-
Okay, sorry, Emily, yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if you would speak to the timeline. Are you looking to dig before winter?
Yeah, we're looking to start construction in October. So we were, you know, again, you know, this is part of our process with Middleton, is that we brought this to Plan Commission back when? March? June? So June, we went to Plan Commission, and it kept, you know, it obviously took a long time to get Plan Commission on board with this total revamp, or, you know, the modification of the parking management plan. And to get, you know, all the design components for the SIP, you know, as far as the height, the look, the approach, the art design in the windows, that kind of thing. So now we're here, and it's September 17th, right, 17th? You know, in order to start by October, our architect needs to start working on the construction docks, which takes a little bit of time, so that our contractors can bid. Our contractors, not only our general contractors need to bid, but our subs need to bid, and then they need to get back to us, and we need to select one. So we're on a tight timeframe right now. We were deferred to, or deferred two weeks ago, and that was kind of a surprise, given how long it's taken with Plan Commission. So this is another-
Emily and then Kathy.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm-
I understand that members of the council are concerned about you not going to them when you have updates, and that the process was different for the first and second. So it sounds like a little bit of communication changes or flows, and I hear you. You are the Alder in that district, that if you're upset, I'm with you. The one thing that I keep thinking, though, is that housing in Middleton is expensive, and the people that live in my district are paying 800, 900, 1,000, 1,200, and they are just barely making it. They are having a hard time putting food on the table. And the reason I say that is that when we make choices, and if they're valid, you know, parking is important, but as we, as a community, are talking about stormwater management, getting people to use bikes, and walking, and mass transit, long-term, are we doing this all together? Are we really moving Middleton forward? Because if we are choosing today to make a decision because something happened in a procedural order that's not particular, but forgetting that that added cost, because if you delay it six months, it'll probably cost 200,000, a million, something-
Yep.
-to your company, that's going to be paid out by the renters, and it's going to keep pricing up rent in the city, because if you're paying 1,400 to live in your place, then people in my district are like, well, instead of 800, I'm going to start doing 850, 900. So I am concerned, because if you miss this deadline, and we do this again here out over the next year and a half, we could be artificially raising rents. And if there's a way we can move forward, I would hope we could come together.
So-
What reassurance would we have, that anytime we make an agreement, that they'd be honored?
So per section, whatever, the Third Amendment does address the stabilization parking verification. So Matt Fleming and I worked on this language two and a half years ago, whereby the anticipation that, you know, this is a work in progress, and that at some point will be stabilized, and if there's so many complaints from your, from your constituents, that the city raises an issue to us, then we'll have to fix it within 90 days. So whether that's adding the lifts back in, or whatever the solution would be, but we have to come up with a solution. So that was already contemplated in the TIF agreement, which is kind of a, it's a weird situation here, because the TIF agreement doesn't pertain to parking, but it references the parking agreement. So it's kind of like this, whatever, but, yeah.
The agreement you're referring to makes compliance with the parking management plan a requirement of the agreement. It's not just a Plan Commission approval. It's, it, there should have, there shouldn't have been any changes to the plan made without prior approval by the city. And, and, and in addition, if you wanted to change things, then you should have sought an amendment of the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement, because you said, your client agreed to comply with the, with the plan as it existed at that time.
And Larry, I'm not sure if you know, but Matt Fleming has a draft of the Fifth Amendment to the TIF Agreement.
I've talked with Matt.
Okay.
And we both agree that this was done wrong.
Wrong, but you guys weren't in the me-
There should have been no changes made to the parking in the existing phases until there was prior approval and an amendment of the Phase Three Agreement, because it said that you would comply with the agreement dated September 14, 2017.
Larry, you're right. You're right. We started this discussion in February with Eileen. It takes this long to get to council. I'm not sure if you guys are fully aware of that. Takes countless meetings with staff, which are expensive, because our engineers and our architects have to come. Countless meetings with Plan Commission, which also costs our money. Our architect's in the back right now, just to make sure that there's no, no snafus that arise that would need his attention. So I think it's out of context for you and Matt to have a platonic discussion on what's right and wrong, when the reality is, we need to address to our tenants, and that we were working on an amendment, and that's why I'm here today. So yes, it doesn't always work in the best fashion, and I'm sorry for that, I am. But we're here now, asking to address what we're seeing in reality. There's tons of parking down in the basement. So I don't, you know, we're perceiving a problem that doesn't exist.
Yes, Katie, you have a question?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, Emily, your point is well-taken about the costs and delays and costs. And Kathy, your point is well-taken. I, I find, I, I can sympathize with your frustration. However, if you don't comply with agreements, then you're just going to come up with these walls. That's just the way it's going to go. And so it isn't about really the parking, it's about your word.
Well, and this is the problem, is that our agreement was, the original parking management plan's eight pages, and it's crafted by an attorney. And then there's an implementation line, right? And it's hard for the, the operations team to understand a verbose document that's a parking management plan. Look at the, if you look at the new parking management plan, it's a bunch of pictures.
Isn't that their day job? Like, they, that's their, if they're putting a garage-
Looking through agreements that have redundancies, and they contradict each other, there's several parts in that parking management plan where they don't jive with each other. It says that there's no labeled parking, but then it talks about two-hour parking. So I-
Okay, so let's see how we're going to move forward. So Kathy, did you like what Robert has said? Did these guys agree to it?
I, I just, I just am beyond words. I'm just like, this is, you make it sound like your operations people, they were in charge of putting the, giving everybody fobs, and programming, and building the building the way it is, so that it has reserved parking downstairs. You all agreed to it, and it was wrong.
And I admitted that. Did I not? I said, I'm sorry.
Then you just went on to say-
I said, I'm sorry. And we've been working through this since February. I mean, that's, that's no joke. I think, Abby, you were in some of those meetings with Eileen, but we started this process a long time ago.
Okay, so let's take care of the problem. So they have agreed, they made a mistake, and they're sorry, and let's fix it. So, I mean, that, going forward, it's more important that we take care of the problem and move forward, so.
Yeah, I have to, I have to say, like, you know, I appreciate that you apologized publicly. I'm thinking of not only you, but builders coming up behind you in the next year, two years. I want them to communicate with the Alder. I want there to be a communication flow. I get city staff maybe made a mistake somewhere, or didn't tell you to do something. We have hiccups that happen. But I think it's very important that we think about making sure people do meet agreements, but that at the end of the day, we, we also are supporting people who are coming to live here, that we're, we're making it efficient and effective to get there. And if there is a mistake, and someone takes ownership, I will respect that.
I pulled up the chart that I included in the council packet. I just wanted to mention that I think when he was referring to coming in the spring to talk about proposed changes, our staff was under the impression that those were changes that were being proposed. It was not until Phase Three was brought forward that we actually physically went to the site and started looking at how it was functioning currently. And I think that that makes a lot of sense, because we, we really couldn't evaluate how Phase One was functioning until it was nearly full. I put together this chart in your packets, just to kind of show you, simplify what was in the approved parking management plan, which is the left, the first column, what the current conditions are upon inspecting the site, and then what is, what is being proposed. And of course, the concerns are the, the areas in column three that are red, and probably the one that is gray as well. There are a few categories in which they're not proposing any changes to the parking management plan, and those are shown in green. So the areas that maybe the council should focus on here are the community car, because initially, the parking management plan that was approved by the city and proposed by the developer, I know it was a former staff person that we were working with, I think it was Tyler at the time, who wrote the parking management plan. But, but it did include four community cars in Phase One, and, and those would either be independent or third-party. We had a lot of discussions at the time of approval, that we were concerned that the, the current community car share wouldn't go in Middleton Center, because there wouldn't be demand for it. And the response that we got from TUL was, we would just buy rental cars and, and share them, and make them available for use by apartment tenants. They are proposing to remove that requirement, but they have indicated that they are working with an entity that may be able to provide those in the future. I haven't heard much discussion at the council about whether the community car is of concern, or, or whether it's more the shared parking. On the bus, they were going to provide 10, for 10 employees of their restaurants, 50% off-bus passes. They have indicated that they've advertised, they haven't had anybody take them up on that offer, so they're proposing to remove that requirement. On the lift and slide, it seems like there might be some consensus among the council that maybe the lift and slide weren't the best idea. They're not functioning well now. They're limiting the, the use of the spaces, because they're narrow, and it's, it's a new product, and I think people in Middleton just aren't used to parking in a lift and slide system. We did express that concern. I remember hearing council members express that concern. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to get the, the entity to come out and fix the lift and slides. So to me, that, it makes sense to reduce the requirement on the lift and slide parking, and they're not even, they, they can't build the lift and slides in Phase Three, because of the building heights that would be required to, to even accommodate them. So they're not proposing them at all in Phase Three. And then the other major changes are related to the shared parking, and that's what I'm hearing the most concern about, and that is, I think, that was part of the overall vision for the development, is that it's going to have different types of land uses, and they can share parking. They don't, you don't need to double up and have individually signed stalls. So I think maybe what, where I'm hearing the most concern is in relation to the shared parking, and that's where I think Alder Person Olson suggested maybe working with Walker to look into shared parking, and whether having any stalls signed for a particular use is a good idea, or whether we should allow the open, shared use of the stalls. That has been my primary concern, that was the primary concern that I addressed to the Plan Commission as well. Gerdip and I had, went and walked through, and we looked at how the parking was functioning. Middleton Center submitted some parking information to us, showing that they had a surplus available at all times, based on their counts. And we went out three separate times, and we took our own parking counts, and they jived with the same, they were pretty much spot-on with the numbers that we had gotten from Middleton Center. We went on a Tuesday, early afternoon, a Wednesday, right at the lunch hour, and then we went on a Thursday evening, and it was the night of the wine walk downtown, so it was really, it was a really busy, bustling night in the downtown. And all of the upper lifts were, of course, vacant during all of our counts, because they're not functional. Most of the lower lifts were also vacant, and those are the underground individually signed stalls. None of the commercial parking at grade was ever vacant, when we went and did our counts. And so that, to us, was an indication that freeing up more of the, the stalls for shared parking, which was the original vision for the development, would make a lot of sense, because then, commercial customers coming to the site would be able to use the, the underground stalls, and they wouldn't be staring at a sign that says you need to have a permit in order to park there. That was really the, the initial vision for the development. Shared parking for everyone, make it open, make it as easy as possible for people to take advantage of the parking within the development, so that they're not externalizing the parking problem onto the city streets. I think Matt Fleming, at the last meeting, pointed out that these counts are only based on current conditions. So Phase Two, I think at the time that we did these counts, was only 35% occupied. Phase One was about 95% occupied. But I did check on-street parking, and kind of looked at the situation, and we didn't do counts on on-street parking, but there was available parking on the street during all of the times that, that we did the counts. I think that was all I wanted to say.
Yeah, so I have gone there multiple times. Even once I went there at 10:00 PM, just to see that, you know, where are those people parking? And I counted them, how many cars were parked in the parking lot on the Terrace Avenue, then I went down there as well. And then I wanted to see if people are parking in the livery parking lot, there were just only two cars, and I looked at the, this municipal parking lot, so, and then even close to that long table there, that how many people were parking there, so. And there was a plenty of parking, open places in Phase One, and Phase Two, there's abundant parking places, so parking is not the issue right now. The issue is just that they were supposed to follow- The issue is just, uh, that they were supposed to follow the certain plan and they didn't follow it. And I guess that's the own main thing which I can see parking per se is not an issue. There's a plenty of it.
Well, I agree.
But not following what they were, they had agreed to, that's an issue.
I would agree. This time, there, there probably is not a parking issue.
Yes.
I just don't want to agree to something and then we find out a year from now or two years from now that what, and box ourselves in saying, okay, we agreed to have non-shared parking.
Is the shared parking concern for the retail users that are less than five percent of the rentable square feet of the development? Is that the concern?
And the guests.
The guests, which would be the retail users, right? So it's the, the not typical, because the, yeah, you're right. The retail tenants would be repeat users. They park in our basements. So they park typically, we've been putting them in the basements of phase two or phase one so that they're not taking up the surface desirable stalls. So as Abby pointed out, it's those stalls in phase one behind the retailers at grade. People love at-grade parking. People hate garages. I tell, I talk to my wife all the time. I'm like, honey, please park in the garage. She's like, I don't want to park in the garage. None of my friends want to park in the garage. Regardless of the fact that it's free, everyone that I talk to, they don't want to pull in the garage. But what's great is phase two came online in May. And that has forty-five stalls at grade that are approachable and they're easy for our retail customers to park in. And the great part is our apartment residents all have enough one-to-one ratio or actually more than one-to-one. They, they have enough parking underground. So those forty-five stalls will be for the guests. So when I look at phase three, when we talk about Alder Coon's question about, you know, the added cost. If we add the lift and slide stalls, even though I, I don't think it's possible in phase three because of the building height.
No, they're not.
But those stalls cost, you know, for phase one, that was one point five million dollars. That's a lot of money. And money we can't recoup from charging extra parking because the city said, no, you can't charge for parking. So that's a cost that, yeah, you're right, we had to raise our rents. So we're top of the market. Thank goodness, we're full. But yes, we're pushing our rents, which is probably resulting in a ripple effect throughout the city, especially in municipality like Middleton. Every appraisal I see that comes back from Middleton has a vacancy of less than two point five percent. Less than two point five percent, that's, that's unheard of. That's lower than Madison. And it's no wonder because there aren't a lot of developers building apartments in Middleton. Present company excluded.
So, well, parking.
Because of stuff like this, it's so hard to get a project approved because the parking burden's put on us. As I said at the beginning of this, if we don't have enough parking, we're not making revenue. It's on us. Why is the city concerned when there's over, was it five hundred public stalls within five blocks of the development? That largely aren't being utilized. So if it's parking for the, for the public plaza, did somebody bring up the public plaza that we'd have to provide parking for? That's not part of the agreement. So we're not providing parking for, we, Middleton and we talked to staff three years ago. You guys had the opportunity of paying for a public parking lot underneath phase two for an extra level. That was five million dollars, city passed on it. I think that makes sense. Going further underground would be very expensive. But to put the public plaza now on our development as shared parking, that's, that's ludicrous.
What I'm saying, most people went to the, would be visiting some of the establishments down there, I would imagine.
Some of the other establishments as well? Are we providing parking for Free House and, you know, Dola Villa Dolce and all the other retailers downtown?
Okay, so let's see, how do we move forward? I think, I don't see any, you know, I have checked at least seven, eight times. I, and Abby has too. We never found any parking issues there. So there's a plenty of parking, but the main thing is that they did something which wasn't in the parking plan. So how do we move forward now? So what is that, uh, which we want to do now, so? Yes, Emily?
Can we at least work on Robert's suggestion?
We, we have a motion in a second. We have to either figure out whether that we're gonna either have to vote on that or, or somebody has to come up with another solution.
Can we look at that slide that Abby had with the greens and reds to, that goes over like six or seven things? Like, at least if we said, this is, okay, this is fine, these three are fine, these two not fine, and then this one, we're gonna, whatever.
Okay, so.
I'll just telegraph my perspective in that, uh, I think the community car, yeah, I think times have changed. And I don't see that as being a huge need right now nor.
You're gonna have a hard time.
Yeah, I don't think it's desirable or, or even really, uh, feasible to, to go with companies that don't, you know, shared car companies that don't want to base themselves here.
They're going bankrupt and.
Right.
Yeah.
Are they?
The bus, if there's really no takers, there's no takers. The lift and slide, we've already talked about. I'd love to actually see the trays pulled out and make more of those, even though it'll like have the number of, of positions for the slides because the upper portion won't be usable. It'll make the, the, the parking spots that are there underneath the slides much more usable. And I'd like to see that happen and put the, the shared parking, or sorry, the, the, uh, assigned parking spots that are listed elsewhere in the building to be in those maybe slightly harder to park in lift and slide spots. And then, um, the whole shared parking thing, I guess we're, that's kind of where we're still saying the, the signage is, was going underneath the, the lift and slide.
Can you, can you just repeat again the ones you're for?
Oh, okay.
You're for the community car, the bus.
No, I'm for, I, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm.
For the proposed.
You're for the proposed removal of the community car. You're for the, the bus, the lift and slide.
The proposed, yeah, change to the lift and slide mechanism.
Okay. And I'm in agreement with that. I have no problem with that. I just don't want to say that we're going to allow the underground parking spots for all the tenants in perpetuity. If we, they want to have it now until the next parking study and if we find some changes at that point, we'll have to deal with it.
Okay, so are you modifying your motion to that then?
No.
Okay. Okay, so.
Okay, we got a solution then. If your concern is the parking study, and we know parking studies take probably three months.
Yeah.
Um, could we approve the parking management plan? Subject to, as it says in the TIF agreement, where we've got to be in compliance. If you guys order a study, we have to get in compliance with the ninety days. So could you approve the parking management plan since it sounds like you're not going to add the lift and slides in phase three because those don't work? Uh, you're okay with decommissioning the current lift and slides? Um, the bus, the community car, yeah, or just background on the community car. The rentals for a community car, you have to rent it for two hour minimums. So I don't know anybody, I mean, if you're gonna share Uber, it seems like it's way cheaper. Minor comment. So, um, but yeah, so going back to, so maybe we could approve the parking management plan as proposed. Subject to the parking management, or the, the parking plan. Compliance with whatever your decision is on the parking management plan.
I would like, I would go along with that, but I want Walker to do a study, but I also want Walker to do a study after the, the development is completed and established.
And again, that is, yes, and we, that is within the cities that, that's contemplated in the TIF agreement that the city can require that at any time, actually. And we'll pay for the, and we'll, we have to pay for the parking management plan. So third, so under, let me get the.
Parking management plan or the parking study?
Parking study. So let me point you to, and I actually carried it forward in that fifth, uh, proposed fifth amendment before you guys, the TIF agreement. Sorry to jump ahead. Section three. What does it be? Three A B? Three B two stabilized parking verification. It says the city may engage a third-party certified parking consultant to conduct a parking compliance verification report for each phase of the project following stabilization for each phase. The developer shall be responsible for the reasonable expense of the verification report, if any. If the result of the verification report identifies a deficit in the actual parking needed for the development, then the developer shall be responsible for remedying such deficit within ninety days or risk of being default of the agreement. Um, if on the other hand, there's a surplus, then the parking required by the city for the developer, then the city shall consider reducing the parking requirement for the, the surplus. So, so again, I think it's contemplated in the TIF agreement. So if you're saying, let's approve it today, subject to what Walker finds and what you, I mean, it's not going to be just what Walker says. It's going to be what staff recommends after seeing the report, I assume. Because Walker doesn't just say like A, B, C, D, it kind of, they reflect on what they see.
I think that does make sense, Scotty, doesn't it?
Um, one question I do have in your proposal, your amendment, it's on page one oh six. And what you're calling, uh, shared parking that became available in phase one were thirty spots on Terrace Avenue lots. I think that that should be struck. We originally agreed to allow that as the, in an interim for phase one and two until phase three was completed.
Yeah, that's going out. When you're building phase three, you don't have those thirty there, so.
That's not how the numbers are, are totaled up.
Oh, so that's misleading. Yeah, sorry. So the, the Terrace Avenue lots, that's phase three. So that's why it's thirty with phase one. So yeah, that is misleading. We'll just delete that.
Okay, so then that only allows for fifty-four parking spots for visitors in phase one. Forty-six in phase two, seventeen in phase three. And for a total of a hundred and seventeen.
I'll have to check the numbers I've got.
Um, seventeen, um, the above-ground parking, only seventeen of them are unsigned on phase three, not twenty-two. Twenty-two stalls are not all unsigned, only seventeen of those are.
The numbers don't add up either. Our finance director pointed it out.
I think, yeah, the, I think the reduction was supposed to be put in here, but it was only reduced by ten. So the total should be three hundred and fifty-five and the free visitor availability should be one twenty-two, I believe.
Okay, so you will fix it.
I think it's one seventeen.
Okay, so you will fix that table, so.
We'll fix the table to make sure the numbers make sense, yeah.
Okay, so, so do we have a?
We still have motion in a second. So do we just have to vote on that?
Could you restate?
No, Kathy, you should modify the motion, right?
Why don't you withdraw the first?
Yeah, or withdraw it and make another motion.
I can withdraw it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so our second, okay, so the motion is withdrawn, so let's make a new motion, so.
Okay.
You can do this. I'll second, Robert.
I, I haven't, I haven't made my motion, but I, I, it's, oh, you got it?
That motion.
From, okay, then, yeah, I make the motion.
What do you, read it back.
That we approve.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'm.
To approve the parking management plan, the proposed, um, subject to a Walker parking study and staff recommendations on the shared parking.
We want, what I would like to see is a parking study now.
Right.
As they're making these proposals and then add another one.
Yep.
As concluded.
Okay, Abby, you have something to say?
Questions on?
Okay. Go ahead.
And after, after the building's complete?
When it's established. Stabilized and.
Was there a second? No, there was not, yeah.
Okay, I'll be quiet until.
Yes, Abby, are you okay with the motion?
Oh, you did.
I second.
Did.
Okay, I second it.
Two questions just about it. Are you proposing that the shared parking study be conducted at the developer's expense or the city's expense? And the second question, would you like for the scope of work for the study to come back before the finance committee and council for approval? Or would you like us to get started on it right away?
Developer?
And the agreement says developer, so there's no, we'll, we'll pay for that.
And I, are you okay with them, of the staff getting worked on or do you want it, and, and keeping you briefed of things as it comes back?
Or Abby, and then I can work with it.
Okay. Yeah, work with the staff, but doing it right now doesn't really do any good. I mean, you've got so much space there, it doesn't really, well, I mean, it's up to you, but I don't see that it would help any at all. So maybe, you know, when it's maturing, that's when we really need to know what's working, what isn't working, so. But I'm okay with whatever you want, so. Okay, so.
And, and can I just have a minute?
Yes. Yes.
So as, we have a motion and before we vote on it, I just want to make sure that maybe you understand that a, a vast majority of this problem has been because there's a feeling that you haven't communicated well enough. So going forward, if we're, if we're going to do this, I, I don't really want to sit here and argue, keep arguing these points. It's, I, I personally don't think that there's a, a real parking issue down town. That's my point. But I do have a huge problem with kind of doing an end around it. I understand where you're coming from and I totally understand, um, budgets change, market conditions change, been there, done that, totally understand that. But there seems to be a habit of, of having to come back and do these kind of things. I don't really want to continue to go through this. What, what can you say to us as a whole to give us comfort in that what we're voting on today and what we're doing today is actually going to move forward?
So the question is, you know, there's different layers that we communicate with. So I think we do a lot of communication with staff, um, and then we go to plan commission, which you see. So the question is, do you guys want us, and this is something I can start to work with Abby on, is on changes like this that are important to council? We can just bring it, it's not even conceptual, it's like an informational update?
I, I think the question.
Change to the parking management plan that has to get approved by the council.
Right, right.
I think.
But if you, but would you guys prefer an update too as we, you know, hey, just update, we're stabilized and this is what we're seeing? Or do you just want to see if we have changes? My hope is not to have changes. I mean, I, I don't, I don't like to do this.
Your contract continues to say that you'll comply with the agreement, uh, the parking plan in the form approved on such and such. I think you should be asking for an amendment if you're going to be making a change.
Talking about in the future or right now? Because right now we are asking for that.
From now on.
So if we want to change, if we want to change, if we want to change the new status quo, we will come to council, we will ask for a change. Yeah, that's what I've got to tell my, uh, my superior. So, yes, I will make sure that that is communicated clearly to my boss.
Okay, so Lori, you want to read the motion and then we vote on it?
I keep adding to it over here. To approve the parking management plan as proposed, subject to a Walker parking study on the shared parking being done now, um, and getting staff recommendations from that. The developer is paying for it, which is in the TIF agreement and the staff implementation of the results of that study. Staff will implement those results without coming back to council, correct? Is that what you decided on? That's what you guys discussed, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Clear communications. Okay, all those in favor?
I would like to also, um, exclude those thirty parking spots on Terrace Avenue.
Yeah, fix the table.
Yeah, fixing the table, I have that over here, yes.
Okay.
Fixing the table. The, the item that I was asking about whether we, we could proceed without getting council approval was not approving the plan and it was not implementing the plan. It was just simply, we would get the scope of work and if the developer was funding it, then we would go ahead and approve a contract administratively at the cost of the developer so we could get started right away on the plan. But we would still bring the results back to the, the council.
Would that be Walker parking, Walker?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we've had good luck working with them. They're, they're actually based out of Chicago and they've got two primary consultants who have mostly been doing work in Middleton. Both have been to Middleton. We might want to have them come back to Middleton to see how the development is functioning.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Lori, say aye.
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, so, all right, move on to item number two. Specific implementation plan for Middleton Center Phase Three, Middleton Center Three LLC. I guess we already talked about these things now, okay. Yeah, need a motion?
How to move approval?
Need a second? And stipulation, this includes that all these, uh, um.
All the contingencies.
All the contingencies. Okay, need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments now?
I do have just one question. How will the, I'm under recommendation of number two, adopt the amended and restated parking management plan? We won't be, won't be exactly as they have it written.
That would, that should change to as stated.
As stated.
Under one above. Under one above. Okay. Any other? Yes, Katie?
Um, our friend Tony was concerned about lights on the side, the Terrace Avenue side of the building. I, I see that headlights won't shine through the building. However, um, there will be lights, I assume, all along the building. And I would like to request that those be minimal.
So Abby, they will follow the city regulations? So what do you, what is it?
Our lighting ordinance specifies zero-foot candles at the lot line and it also requires full cutoff down lighting fixtures. Um, and the recommendation for approval by the plan commission was contingent on them submitting a lighting plan that complied with the city ordinances. It, the recommendation from plan commission didn't ask for anything above and beyond what we would normally require, except that there was a specific concern about headlights shining across the street into properties to the south. And that's because there is underbuilding parking at grade. And the solution that the plan commission came up with was that there would be some sort of artistic feature. It has yet to be designed or approved, but that it would be, um, you know, from the height of a parking, a light, a headlight down, it would be a solid wall which would block any lighting coming across the street. And then above that, it would be like some sort of cut-out sculptural piece or something like that.
So zero-foot candles at the lot line, so that's, that's pretty good, so.
And we haven't seen the lighting plan yet.
So that will be approved separately. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say, on the specific implementation plan for Milton Center Phase Three, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Luke, what's your vote?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, unanimous, so Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement for Milton Center Phase Three. What is this, Larry, and what is, what do you want to do with it?
Excuse me, this is, as has been discussed, uh, the plan for Phase Three, which simply is a pickup from the previous agreements that we've done. We have both a redlined and a clean version of it in, in your packet. I've reviewed it and have no problems with it.
Okay.
Subject to the issues with the parking that you have previously discussed.
So need a motion to prove?
I'd move approval.
Need a second. Larry has blasted.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, this is for the approval of the Fifth Amendment of the Development Agreement for Milton Center Phase Three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
You are voting for it, right? Are you, are you opposed or you're voting for it? What's your vote?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. So unanimous. So we are on to recommendations and proposals. Recommendation to submit request for a central urban services area amendment for eventual accession of, uh, Diamond Plaza, Twin Sunset Road. These guys have been probably waiting for a long time, so.
I would move approval to offer my staff to prepare the application for submission.
Need a second? Okay, any questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion of a recommendation to submit the request for a central urban services area amendment, say aye.
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 Okay, anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Referrals. Referral concerning penalties for possession of vaping device. It's by, it's by Luke.
I'd move referral to Eleanor.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to referring this to Eleanor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
There was an I, not a N.
Yes, okay, that was a I, so. Okay, so the resolutions. Number one, so Luke, that, you are in, you are in favor of referring to Eleanor, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Resolution twenty nineteen thirty-five, authorizing the issuance of establishing parameters for the sale of not exceed six million dollars general obligation promissory notes, Series twenty nineteen B, mark.
I'll move approval, recommended by finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? So the motion passes. Okay, we are on to the committee appointments. So the number one is Conservancy Lance Committee Appointment, Emil Haney and Chris Markel. Emil Haney has been working with the Feden Branch Conservancy and has been a member for a long time. He's a, has been a professor at UW as well. And Chris, he lives in District Seven. And Chris Markel, he lives in Amelie's District, District Number Four.
No one has any objections. I'll move that we approve all of these, one through, one through four. A second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve all one through four, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Every time I'm like, what?
That was an I, yes. Okay, need a motion to adjourn. Okay. All those in favor, say aye, but we are adjourned.